I believe I understood what we were doing with those that are not contested positions.
Unless you'd like to interview them.
I don't think you can make a motion.
I don't think you...
Right, can't make a motion until we're not a...
So we do the... No.
We was talking about...
Yeah.
Do you want to interview those who are on contested...
I think it's a good idea, I do. And then, then I'll go turn to you for the motion and... All right. Okay.
Do you have a green light that went away?
Oh, there it is. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is a special session of the Salem City Council in order to conduct interviews for the upcoming positions for the City of Salem Budget Committee members from the community. So, welcome each of you applicants. We appreciate you coming, appreciate the time you've spent already applying and giving this, these positions consideration, and appreciate you being here tonight. What I'd like to do is to start actually by having the councilors each introduce themselves to you so that they, you all know who they are and what area of town their wards represent. And then, we'll hear a statement from each of you, starting with Raquel Moore-Green for Ward Three, and then we'll go to Daniel Benjamin for Ward Six. And then, we have three individuals who have applied for at-large position: Richard Berger, Dan Farrington, and Michael Mitchell. And those, in case you might have caught that, I'm doing alphabetically. So, that was an easy way for me to decide who's going to go first, second, and third out of that group. All right. So, Councilor Bennett, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Chuck Bennett. I represent Ward One, which is inner west Salem, north and northeast Salem, as well as the downtown area.
I'm Laura Tussler. I represent the area around Bush Park. Basically, go all the way up to kind of Madrona and the Javelin Airport. I'm working in my boundary change again.
All work, good.
And then, sort of on Radcliffe and then back. So, basically, all of that areas in the neighborhood, all Sessna, all Seventeen.
Can you do that again?
Councilor Tessa, you may want to move your microphone up somewhat closer to your mouth. All right. Thank you.
My name is Brad Nankie. City Council for Ward Three. Essentially, I start at Ratcliffe now. Shootout Liberty, notch in a little bit to hit Coogler, and then run the railroad tracks out to the Coogler area. Then I shrink down and then open back up and pick up the entire Mill Creek Corporate Center, the Renewable Energy and Technology Center with a bit of residential on the other side of Twenty-Two.
Rich Clausen in Ward Four, basically south of Coogler and over to Liberty and I Five.
Councilor Thomas, Ward Six, East Salem, North East Salem.
Warren Benars, Councilor Ward Seven, basically south of Mission Street and west of Liberty, though it does jump on the other side. But, anyway, just basically goes south, so it's Fairmount, all the way through Sunny Slope.
Good evening, I'm Dan Clem. I represent Ward Eight, which is, by and large, used to be all of west Salem, and now it's predominantly the residential part of west Salem. Thanks for coming.
And I'm Anna Peterson, Mayor, and I represent the entire city of Salem. Unfortunately for me, we have good city councilors who get out there to all of those wards, so I don't get to every ward every week, but try to be out in the community as much as I can. So, thank you all for coming this evening. And I'd like to start with Raquel Moore-Green, and introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll just go right along.
Good evening, my name is Raquel Moore-Green, and I reside in Ward Three. My husband and I and our family have lived in Salem for the last eighteen years. And I'm interested in giving back to this segment of the community at this point in my life. Our kids are grown and gone, and my evenings are free of water polo and choir and all of those other things that keep parents busy.
We...
And it's just something I'm interested, I've always been interested in government and giving back locally, so this is something I'd like to do.
Let's see, Richard Berger, who are we going to next? Richard Berger?
Dan Ben...
Oh, Dan, Daniel, thank you.
Good evening, Daniel Benjamin, Chairman, North Lancaster Neighborhood Association. The boundaries are from I Five to Corden Road, from Sunny View to soon-to-be Silverton. And as being on part of the Citizen Budget Committee last year, it's a cumulative effect. Over time, this is something that you can't just really jump into once and expect that you did something really important. If you really want to dig into it, you should probably keep going and going and then really get a better understanding. So that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Richard Berger.
Hello, everyone. Richard Berger, I actually live in Ward Two. I am interested in this position because I really enjoy the diversity that the Budget Committee gets to work with in dealing with kind of the bigger policy issues, as well as kind of all the facets of government. I enjoyed my time on the Budget Committee in the last three years and really learned a lot. And I think the Budget Committee came a long way from the earlier year, the first year I was here, we were pretty disorganized and had some late nights. And I think during the three years I was on, I think the committee got better at what it was doing. And I sure learned a whole lot and would like to continue to use that experience for, hopefully, the good of the city.
Mr. Farrington.
My name's Dan Farrington. I live in South Salem, and I'm owner of Sunrise Medical Consultants, which I started eleven years ago. It's main offices in Kaiser and employ seventeen employees. My wife and I raise six children, all graduated from South Salem High School, and they're all out of the house now. And last year, I ran for office in House District Twenty-One, so I had a great experience and knowledge of our community and needs. And now I have some free time to maybe be a part of this.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Mike Mitchell. I was in Ward Three, but with the recent boundary change, I'm in Ward Two. And so, I heard there was this opening for the at-large position, thought I'd throw my hat in the ring. I've been in Salem sixteen years. I work for SAFE Corporation. I have a computer programming background, but I also have finance, accounting, and economics through my degrees from college. I've been on the Morningside Board for the last two and a half years or so, and I'm a member of CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team. And I just enjoy being involved in the community, and I thought with my background that this would be an opportunity to try to figure out how I could serve in the city more. Thank you.
There are hazards with trying to eat and conduct a meeting at the same time. Excuse me.
I should have talked longer.
All right. It's all right. Councilor Bennett, would you like to ask the first question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. What is your understanding of the role of the Budget Committee member?
And shall we direct our questions, starting with Raquel, and then perhaps next question, we'd start with Mr. Mitchell, and so it rotates a little bit. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. It's my understanding that as a citizen, part of a larger group, there are eight citizens who compose, along with City Council, that make up the Budget Committee, and we're a sounding board and review, essentially, and make, help make the recommendations as to what the budget should be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll just go that way. Mr. Mitchell will be next.
Okay, same question?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for the next question.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and I'm fairly new to this. I feel kind of bad that I haven't actually attended one of these meetings before, because I noticed on the application, that was one of the questions, and it's like, oh, okay. But, again, it was through the Neighborhood Association meeting that I heard about the opening, and it was like, okay, this is interesting. So what I know so far is what I've learned from the website, and it was very much what, Raquel?
Yes.
Yeah, what Raquel just said. And then, yeah, it's my understanding that there were eight citizen members, and then the council. I've reviewed the budget a little bit and saw kind of the option A and B, and the requirement to have a balanced budget, and that we need to be able to work together and try and come up with some of these problems we're having with the projected revenues being less than the projected expenditures. And that's not sustainable for a long time, so I was just hoping I'd be able to take my life's experience and see if I could help along that path a little bit.
Thank you.
The Budget Committee is a part of a state mandated process for the city to develop their budget. And being on the committee, I really saw the value of being the sounding board and vetting this, because ultimately, we serve as an advisor to the council. The council, ultimately, you guys will approve the budget or change the budget as you guys see fit and see best for the city. But I think as our role is getting into some of those details for you, as well as getting that community input that you guys are always receiving, but being there to get that other opinion, as well as to hear from the community at large, and make sure their voice is being heard through you guys ultimately. And I think that's an important thing that we do, both in our, the actual hearing role, when we're hearing, as well as you are, but also being out in the community as we're hearing things, and we're hearing what highlights and what concerns people here as the upcoming budget process. You guys probably hear a lot of that, but I bet we hear different as well.
Of what he said. Yeah, it's being a part of the process, to be able to bring to the table what a larger part of the community is thinking or wanting to do, and at the same time, what happens here, we're able to bring back to our communities and explain why. Thank you.
Well, being in business for the last twelve years, I've learned how to make my own budgets in my own business and at a smaller scale. But, again, we have to make tough decisions. You have to look at every, every section of your business and be able to evaluate that and put numbers on it, and where's the value and where's our strengths? And just having that experience and knowledge of doing that, and going through a recession, and letting go of some people, and then adding back people, and manage it in two states, it's, there's a lot of experience in that of owning your own business. So I, I bring more of the private sector, of someone that's created his own business sense to this. That's my idea.
Councilor Tessa?
Yeah, this time with the microphone, for a refreshing change. Who do we start with now?
We start with Mr. Mitchell.
Who? You're my neighbor.
Yes.
I've seen you go in and out of your house. Okay. And my infrared goggles. Okay, so, so what interests you about serving on the Budget Committee, and what prior experience do you have as a member of a board or committee? Mr. Mitchell, starting out.
As I mentioned, I'm on the Morningside Neighborhood Association Board for about two and a half years, getting my feet wet a little bit there. I've had the opportunity to come and speak in these chambers a couple times when we were dealing with the Fairview Hills issue and the Hill Ficker Lane wanting to be a collector street and stuff, so I'm not quite as intimidated by the microphones here as I might have been otherwise. So, some experience that way. For my interest and how I think I can contribute is just in my career, I mentioned I've worked on financial computer systems, and I have a degree in finance, and so I've spent a lot of time working with all the debits and credits, so to speak. One of the jobs I had prior to coming to Salem was with Boeing Company as a cost management analyst, and helping in the non-labor budget, which was a $450 million budget, and working with department heads to develop that budget, and then tracking actual costs against that budget throughout the course of the year.
So, what experience, what committees, and was there a third thing?
Why, I read it again. What interests you about serving on the Budget Committee, and what prior experience do you have as a member of a board or committee?
I like the diversity of the Budget Committee, as I stated earlier. There's a lot of committees that do a lot of great things in the community, and I really like the diversity and the big-picture aspect of the budget, where you're really not as much focused on a specific thing, but kind of the greater good. That also has always appealed to me. I've liked serving as a non-ward representative, because I, even though I'm sure I would act the same way, I, I like the, the idea that I'm serving for the whole community. The experience, I've been on this committee before, I've served on other committees throughout my life. Right now, I'm the president of the Board of the YMCA here in town, which, as you know, as being chair is different than being on a committee, as being just a member. So I've definitely had that committee experience, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully, continuing to work on this committee.
Well, I guess I've always said that if you don't vote, you can't complain. And so, in this aspect, is understanding how the budget process works for the city of Salem. That way, maybe I can complain, or maybe I can actually understand, so I don't have to complain. And also, what I bring to the table is I usually work with budgets, very small, medium, or even large, with businesses or corporations. So this is kind of a, a way to get even bigger grasp on larger budgets and the nuances of those. So I find that exciting.
Well, as I said before, being a business owner, you know, you experience these different budgets and that type of thing, so that always intrigues me. Also, I'm president of an organization where all my competitors are, belong to, and I'm the president of that. And so, we manage a lot of different bills that go through the state legislature and work with the AMLAC Board at the Work Comp Division. So we get a lot of presentations in that aspect, but also managing a group of people with lots of different ideas and kind of say what is the best solution for each issue and those type of things. I'm on several other boards with United Way, then a lot of sports, different boards, and just dealing with lots of different people that come to the table and be able to listen to everyone and say, what's the best solution for this group or this organization?
That's okay. Thank you. What interests me about being part of the Budget Committee is, we all know that nothing operates without funding, and it's essential to, to the city. And I do think it's, it's important that it's monitored and evaluated and all of those things. The experience that I can bring to the table, I've served on numerous committees with nonprofit organizations here in the city of Salem, and previously where we lived in Washington. Specifically, served six years with Salem City Club, Salem Schools Foundation, which is now Salem Kaiser Schools Foundation, South Salem Water Polo, as far as board members are concerned. One of the more interesting areas that I served in for maybe five or six years was with School Matters, which was a grassroots organization here in town that lobbied and, hard to describe, but educated the, the public on the Salem Kaiser School District's budget. So I attended numerous budget meetings over many years and understood their budget and funding and allocations and FTEs and so on and so forth. So although I did not sit on that Budget Committee, I feel that I have a grasp of how budgets that are governed by entities such as this operate and, and input and understanding them.
Excellent. Thank you. Question number three, starting with Mr. Berger. What do you think are the biggest budget challenges and concerns facing the city of Salem today?
Revenue and expenses.
Great.
Yeah, the...
Is it Benjamin?
The rise in purse cost is clearly something that is, we see every year as taking up a bigger and bigger chunk. The, the instability, I was going to say stability, but instability in Washington, I think will be an interesting to see how our economic models change. The city manager has done a good job of laying out not just a year-to-year budget, but trying to project into the future, trying to see how we can rise out of this recession as a community. And I think, two years ago, it was all about the crisis in Europe, and I think now we're all about the crisis in DC. And trying to project those and trying to do that balance, revenue and expenses, of trying to keep a lean machine without cutting to the bone where you're truly losing, is a great delicate balance. And I think the, the staff has done a good job of trying to put us on course, but, but the change in the economy is going to be the biggest thing, that if we continue to see instability in our revenue doesn't rise as expected, we're going to be in an interesting spot.
What he said. Okay, it was only funny once. Just to add to that, knowing from last year's experiencing, experience, looking at the fire and police, and how that's more of a, a visual icon to the community about budgeting. And so, just being able to keep an eye on that, because most people don't see the full services day-to-day that the city does offer, and being able to be a part of understanding where we can allocate those things without cutting even deeper, as you mentioned. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say create more business, that we need to do that in this community, but our, our biggest issue is probably going to be the purse coming down the road and making sure that we can manage that. But, and, and the revenue and expenses, like they've both shared together, we need to find ways to create, get people excited about coming to this city and create business. At lunch today, we heard from Regent's Blue Shield that had over 350 employees, and we need to find those type of companies that come to Salem.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
What do you think the, the biggest challenges and concerns facing the city of Salem today? Biggest budget challenges and concerns?
Well, I, I would echo the, the purse issue. And perhaps from a limited sidebar, I would also say, what, what I would refer to as unfunded mandates from the federal government, and things that were asked to do, that there's no money that follows it from, from Washington, and even from the state.
Thank you, Warthor.
I also agree on the purse issue, and I think from a citizen standpoint, that some of the things people see is, of course, police and fire, which was mentioned. I also, things I hear at the Morningside Neighborhood Association Board, is there's a lot of people who are very frustrated about sidewalks, street maintenance, surfacing of the streets, streetlights. They feel like we can't get new things developed, and we don't have the money to maintain what we have. Potholes. So I think that the perception with the citizens is something that will be a challenge to, to let them know that we are out here and we're trying to address those issues. And, you know, compared to the purse, maybe some of those are somewhat trivial, but, but it's important to the citizens. And, you know, some of these things, how, how are we going to make progress on some of these so that we, we have the support of the people in our communities?
Question four. What is your experience and familiarity with budgeting? Do you have any prior experience with public sector budgets?
What he said. Oh, never mind.
It's not working anymore.
Yeah. Well, I work with individuals, families, businesses, and estates, and usually that has to do with planning, putting the proper tools in place to generate the desired effect. So, working with young families, budget's always an issue, just starting out, and then we kind of build from there for in the future. And that's kind of the way I look at this budget, is being able to understand what's in place now, and what needs to be maintained or increased, while leaving other things that become antiquated, and just kind of move forward. And that's the experience I bring.
Well, I have to start out at my home. I raised six children that all, four of them were college graduates, and two are still in college, so to manage that budget has been very difficult. But owning my own business is just managing that and budgeting and, and setting goals and setting your vision and trying to match those, and making sure the budget stays within that, is from my experience. Or as far as the city budgets, I have never had any experience with that.
Professionally, I've been responsible for budgets not nearly as large as the cities, but I have been. And as far as, you said a public sector budget?
Yeah, an experience in public sector budgets.
Okay. Not directly. As I mentioned earlier, my association with attempting to reduce class size in Salem Kaiser several years ago, and lobbying the school board and understanding the budget and how that worked.
I do not have any public sector budget experience. I've mentioned the experience with Boeing, with the non-labor budget there. Other than that, at home, I was quite surprised when I looked online at the city's budget today, how much it looks like my home budget. I have an Excel spreadsheet at home that goes out, current month, and then the, the next twelve months, so it's a thirteen-month, similar type thing. Plus, I'm getting closer to retirement, so I want to be debt-free of all consumer debt in five years. So I have that, I even have a sixty-month budget that has that all plotted out, and so, just familiar with tools of how to assemble some of this, so we can look at revenues versus expenses, and include goals, and try and figure out how to make the budget work into those goals.
I've been a small business owner for the past eight years, so I've been managing that budget successfully. And I own a planning and development consulting firm, so I rode the wave up and then crashed down hard, like many people in this community, and managed to find a way to get through those, those years. It also has given me experience, one thing I do in my consulting business is work on development budgets from the beginning, trying to build a development pro forma. That's a large part of what I do. And then, public sector budget, I have spent the last three years on this Budget Committee, working with this city of Salem's budget.
It appears that we're going to be running out of time if we go ahead and ask all eight questions of all five candidates. So what I'd like to do at this point, councilors, you all have the questions in front of you, and I'd like to just ask those councilors who haven't had a chance to ask a question yet, if you feel strongly that any of the questions left on the sheet need to be asked, let's go ahead and do that now. Otherwise, I think that we would probably just kind of wrap this up and have some time before the, the council meeting actually begins. the council meeting actually begins. Were there any questions from Councilor Thomas, Councilor Benars, or Councilor Clem, or Mayor Peterson? All right. I have one. I do want to ask just the last question that's on the list, just because I think it's very helpful for us to be able to hear your responses. It's how would you go about familiarizing yourself with the current financial state of the city and the composition of the city's budget? And the reason for asking this question is because when we begin our budget hearings, it's particularly helpful if the budgets committee members are already somewhat up to speed and would be able to understand at least some of what they're seeing right off the bat. So I'd like to start and start asking that question, probably along with Mr. Farrington, since he hasn't been first yet. There you go.
Good. Well, like anything new, I'd go to all the department heads and kind of, I used to call it play dumb, and ask lots of questions, and have them explain each of their departments and what's going on. And I, you know, I haven't really looked at a spreadsheet of what the city has, but I think it's important to know all the players and all the organizations that we're going to be dealing with under the umbrella, and meet with each one of them, and kind of find out their needs, what they're doing. When I ran for office, that's what I did. I went to the mayor, and I went to the chief of police, I went to the sheriff, I went to everybody that was in charge, and kind of got a feel of their background, and what do they see, and what is important to them. Because I think you have to build that little bit of relationships too, and kind of understand that. And it makes it a little bit clearer of what things positioning, not favoritism or that type of thing, but more of an understanding what their role is, and what they do, and their daily routines. And to me, that would make me more comfortable about looking at a budget, kind of look at it each department, and see what their needs are and their experiences are. Because it's people, everyone has a story. It's good to hear everybody's story. And then kind of sift that through, and then when I start looking at a budget, I can understand what each of those departments, what their responsibilities are, and that type of thing.
I would probably familiarize myself with the budget by having a hard copy of it and a highlighter, and just going through and reading, you know, each department's mission or statement of purpose, and how they allocate their funds. And I might not be quite as bold as Dan and go speak with each department head, but I would probably see whether or not city manager would have time to help answer any questions that I might have. And then also solicit the input of my city councillor, Nanki, and any others that might be able to give some guidance or help.
I'm kind of a latecomer to the process, but what I did have time to do a little bit is I did go to the website, and I pulled up the budget. I believe it was about 19 pages long, and kind of read through the option A and the option B. And I saw there was a lot of commentary there that talked about purse and talked about other challenges. So that would be the starting point for me. I, too, would probably print it out and get my highlighter. And I also feel very fortunate to be on a CERT team lead committee with Brad Nanki. And I think for me, he's a valuable resource, so I would definitely make some time to speak with him, because he's been on these. And then I would develop a plan, because I don't know how deep the citizens go, as far as who we talk to and interview and things like that. So I recognize I have a lot of learning to do, but that would be my starting point.
I actually save the hard copy every year I've been on this committee. And I do like to go back and look at them, because it's interesting to see what the hot topics were two years ago, three years ago. And I think something that's very valuable was the initial address by the city manager at the beginning of the process, her forecast, and then comparing to what it was in the years past, and what those things that were concerning her two years ago. And if they've left the plate, it's very interesting to ask the question. We were talking all about, you know, public works and sewage treatment. Are we still talking about that today? We were talking all about closing of a fire station. Are we talking about that today? I think that gives you a good background, and I think it really frames a very complicated book that you can look at for a year and not know it completely, and can really start to frame you and focus on what some of the big issues are, as well as, of course, the input we get from the community.
Yeah, that kind of goes back to the first statement I had in regards to, it's a cumulative effect to always be able to serve on the Citizen Budget Committee to understand, and it kind of opens doors further down the line. And it's good that you mentioned that you still have those hard copies, because so do I, and I wasn't sure if I was supposed to give them back. But I have been perusing them a little bit here and there. Yeah, yeah, I didn't think so. But I wasn't sure. So, you know, I've been perusing them a little bit here and there, to understand some of the topics that we discussed, and what would it be like for next year. Also, when people had concerns about, well, how come they're spending this money on this and that? And I said, well, I'll show you why. You know, it's because of this, that, and the other thing. So which one do you want? You want more fire department, or do you want, you know, more police? Which one do you want? You know? So, yeah, that would be the answer to the question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. I would like to ask each of you to just be excused. We're not going to deliberate right now. We deliberate in our council meeting in terms of our balloting, I should call it balloting, not deliberating. But we really thank you for taking time to be here this evening, and for your very thoughtful consideration and your answers. And, you know, it's a pleasure to be a mayor in a city where people of the quality, the caliber of each one of you is willing to step forward and be a partner with the city. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Counselors, if you have, if there's time for seconds, if anyone is so inclined, we'll have a little break and a little chat, and get back to our meeting at 6:30. Okay?
So we have a second. Call this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for October 14th to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Commissioner Tesler.
Present.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Benars.
Here.
Commissioner Clem.
Here.
Commissioner Hein.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Please, do you mean the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time on the Housing Authority agenda for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the Housing Authority? Okay. And Commissioner Nanki, the consent calendar with additions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move consent calendar with additions.
Any discussion? Counselor Claus.
Sorry, I forgot to discuss this with Counselor Nanki. I would like to discuss count items 3.2A and B. Mr. Welch and I had a good conversation earlier today, and I just had one question I'd like to pose to him for the council to hear.
Why don't you just do that under discussion of Counselor Nanki's motion?
Okay, that works for me. So, Mr. Welch, thank you for the phone call earlier today. It was very helpful for me. On the letters of intent to engage the investors, 3.2A and B regarding Parkway West, Parkway East, and Robert Lindsay, would you mind just kind of reviewing exactly what it is we're approving as far as the next step in the process going forward, and what is the next step coming back to us for approval, prior to any, say, contracts being signed or enactment of any contracts?
By all means, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The actions in 32A, 32B, and actually 323, I'm sorry, 32C, all three of those documents are tied together expressly to begin to execute on the Parkway Village renovation and the Robert Lindsay Tower renovation. The specific request here from staff to the commission tonight relates to authorizing staff to enter into a letter of agreement with the investors and lenders, and negotiate the financial package that we would think would be the right financial package for the project to be most successful. And of course, bring that back to the commission, for the commission to review that and approve that financial practice package. We think that will happen in addition to a couple other items, which is the formation of a new ownership entity along with the insertion of a new financial partner into this new ownership entity, as well as the closing of the construction. So the construction contract itself would be one of those large items that would come back to the commission, as well as the financing package, as well as the formation of these additional partnerships. And those all would be before, on, or before December 31 of this year.
Thank you. And then the final piece that's outstanding on the package, the Robert Lindsay Parkway East permanent lending, permanent loan would come back as part of that final package for approval. Is that correct?
That's correct. As I mentioned in the report, we had a single permanent lender respondent that pulled back, and so we need to rework that, if you will. We think the model's still valid. We just have to look for someone who will execute that model with us.
And in the worst case, where we don't get respondents, we're not committing ourselves so far to where we have obligations that are negative to the commission if that doesn't work out in a worst-case scenario?
That's correct. I mean, this is the preferred model, the FHA financing model. If that model wasn't going to be viable in the marketplace, and that's really the pressure, is the cost of funds in the market on the loan itself. But if that wasn't going to be viable, we have backup plans that will get us to the same place, maybe just in a little bit different way. But those would all be for the commission review and approval. Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I do want to remind the commission, this was to have been the subject of a fairly extensive work session. Mr. Welch is here, prepared tonight to take us through a staff presentation, if any of you feel you'd like to go through. Okay. I get the sense that you would like to vote on this, then. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar with additional report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Do you have anything on the program management report you'd like to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's always something. Let me get back to my document, please. We've talked a lot and had a great conversation with Commissioner Dickey when we met a couple weeks ago, about the real estate, about the Job Growers Program. And so I just want to bring attention to the commission on the, if I can find it, excuse me, program management report. We just noted some highlights of our family self-sufficiency program. You may know that we have 161 active family self-sufficiency enrollees, if you will. And we're really proud to help those individuals, like our new commissioner, Commissioner Hein, to facilitate education, own a home, and have a longer-term prospectus for economic sufficiency. So just want to always bring your attention to that particular article in the program management report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We have no special orders of business, unfinished business, or new business. Without objection, the Housing Authority is adjourned.
change of musical chairs here. A call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for October 14th, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
Present.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Clausen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benars.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson. Here. Thank you. We now need a motion for approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any questions regarding the additions or deletions? Seeing none, hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for council comment. I'd like to take a moment, a somber moment, but I think an important moment, to mark the passing of Orville Roth, who passed away this weekend. Orville Roth was a person in our community who, time and again, came forward financially, and with time and other resources, to help so many organizations, and so many really marvelous things happen in our community, not just in the City of Salem, but beyond as well. Two things that I will always remember him for, one is the carousel, because when he was approached, he was very supportive of the carousel, because he knew it was going to be like a magnet for children to Riverfront Park. And one of the other things that I will always remember is that he was a strong and faithful supporter of the concept of the Oridin Garden. And he did much to bring that to the fruition that it is today. His fingerprints are on so many other things in our community, and we certainly are going to miss him. And I wanted to have a moment to say to his family how much we appreciated what he did in our community, and that his legacy will live on far longer than even those of us who are holding office today. And we appreciate so much, Orville Roth. Other comments? Counselor Benars?
It's hard to beat on a somber moment like that. I had the joy of this last Saturday of going to the Bob Straub Environmental Learning Center, where they had the unveiling of the ceramic tile mosaic. It's a set of hands releasing wildlife, of flowers and animals and into the air. And it was made by, I think, well over 300 people had participated in the design or into the making these mosaics. The artist, Lynd Takata, was the one that coordinated the overall project. And I really have to give thanks to Michelle Cordova, who's the executive director out at the Bob Straub Learning Center. It was a wonderful day, well-attended, had some great food, great conversation. What a wonderful place out there. It really is. Nice.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. Well, I am wearing this McKay pin today, so I would remember to make this comment tonight. A couple weeks ago, the concession stand at McKay High School burned down. They don't know what exactly happened, but it was a total loss. And last Friday night was their first home football game since that had happened. And I just want to say a huge thank you to Greg Peterson from Broadway Cafe, who donated food, and A to Z Party Rental, who donated tents, and the propane, and all the stuff to make that concession stand happen. That was just a huge contribution, because that's, some of our teams really depend on those funds for some of their resources. So I just wanted to say thank you to those two entities. those two entities. And there were other volunteers and people who gave, I don't have the whole list, but I appreciate everyone who helped in that effort to support our kids.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just want to recognize an article that was in Sunday's paper headlined Downtown Upswing. We often talk about our downtown, we spend a great deal of time planning, thinking, working, discussing, arguing about the future of the downtown. It was a really positive story that I think tells a story, gives a message to the community that our downtown is healthy and getting healthier, and I'm just really pleased that that portion of my ward got that kind of recognition. It can be so easy for discouragement or naysayers to say otherwise, but I think stories like this really tell what's actually happening down there, and what a really positive, both place to visit, place to shop, place to have a cup of coffee, a great meal, our downtown is. So I want to thank the Statesman Journal for that kind of positive and, I think, really informative reporting.
Other counselors, other comments? All right, thank you very much, appreciate those. It's now time to address the budget committee appointments process, and I believe Counselor Bennett, you have a motion, and then we have ballots.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the appointment of Raquel Moore Green to the Ward Three Budget Committee position and Daniel Benjamin to the Ward Six Budget Committee position.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to reappoint Daniel Benjamin to position number six and to appoint Raquel Moore Green to position number three. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And now we have ballots in front of us for the at-large position, and earlier this evening, for those of you in the audience who weren't here earlier, we did interview three candidates for the at-large position, and we will be now voting to select one of the three. The three people who were candidates are Richard Berger, Dan Farrington, and Michael Mitchell. So if the counselors would please cast your vote, and then they will be collected, and our acting city attorney is going to tally the votes.
We hired this staff guy.
Yeah, he hired somebody to do it for him.
We want to trust these ballots.
I would like to say, while the ballots are being tallied, that there were five people who appeared this evening for the interviews, and I told them I was particularly pleased to be the mayor in a city where people of such caliber were willing to step forward and put their names forward for appointment to a committee, the budget committee in particular, that takes quite a bit of time in one segment of the year, and I think we're fortunate for every one of those people who stepped forward, and I appreciate their doing so. Do we have a tally?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Richard Berger was the winning candidate with seven votes.
All right, thank you very much. We will notify Mr. Berger that his tenure will continue on the budget committee. He has served, I think, for the last three years, his first term, this will begin his second three-year term. All right, thank you. We now have time for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for this public comment? No one, all right, we're just going to buzz right along here to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We'll now proceed to the public hearing of 4A, which is a continuation, actually, of the public hearing on the planning administrator's decision for subdivision modification for property that's located in the blocks on Davis Road South. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion? I'm sorry, Counselor Benars has a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
I do have a motion here. I move to adopt staff's recommendation and affirm the decision of the planning administrator with the following additional condition. Condition number nine shall be added to the decision, which will state, quote, "Prior to the submittal of the final plot for approval of the last phase of the proposed tentative plan, the applicant shall provide a second connection to a public street outside the subject property at one of the eight stub streets located, locations indicated in the proposed modified tentative plan in order to provide safe and convenient access for vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, as required by Salem Revise Code 63046 and B4 and 63051 A2 and B."
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Benars and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation with the modifications as identified by Counselor Benars. Is there discussion?
If I can speak to my motion?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. This has been a very difficult one, since it's been a long time since this city has seen a development of this size, so for me, it's a brand-new kind of thing, and I think it's newer to some of the staff where we're headed down. I think one of the things that makes it new is that there was a decision by the Supreme Court that, back in June of 2013, so it's not all that long ago, that changes the game a little bit on us, and we have to show in this whole thing that it isn't a taken of the property if we want to put a street through, but we have to show that there's a practical application of connection within the property, so that it is good for safe and convenient bicycle and pedestrian access from within the subdivision to the adjoining neighborhoods and residential areas. And I think that we can show that in this, I really would like to see the development happen, I just want to make sure that we have that second access for emergency vehicles as well as individuals that will be within that area, well over, I think, around 240 lots that are planned in that area.
All right, is there further discussion? Counselor Dickey?
Thanks, I have a question to the maker of the motion, so, just because your motion was really, really long, I was just wondering if you could just break it down a little bit and basically just kind of explain, I think I understood that you're asking for staff recommendation with the additional requirement that there be a second connection, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct. What was proposed by the applicant was Street G over Lot B on access to Skyline Road. What we're saying, what I'm trying to say is, I want to have access, a secondary access, and I'm going to leave it up to the developer to figure out one of those eight locations that they've already indicated on the subdivision plot.
Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the maker of the motion, I just want to understand this, there are three owners on this property, have they, do they have like a combined development application that will, no matter where the final phase of this is, or whatever phase they decide to choose, all three owners have agreed to common responsibility for this extension?
I think at this point, we have a single application. There may be three common owners within that area, but I think that's between them, what we have to look at is a single application for the property, so that's the way I'm treating it.
So we're protected, and the residents of the area are essentially guaranteed, there will be, that this will occur?
This will, it is one of the conditions of, it's the ninth condition of their application.
The only concern I have, I just want to make sure it's real certain, because this is at the end of a process rather than at the beginning or at some phase during the process, it's sort of at the end, all 200-some-odd lots are developed, but there is a, we're adequately, I guess maybe for the city attorney, if that's okay, just, we are adequately and the neighborhood there is adequately guaranteed that this extension will occur.
The condition, as I understand it, requires that the second access be provided, you know, prior to the final phase of the subdivision being platted, so...
What's a phase mean?
Well, there are several phases of the proposed subdivision, so prior to the final phase, there's going to have to be a second connection, and it's not going to necessarily require it right now.
Right.
Or in the next phase, but eventually, they're going to need to have that second connection.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Nanki? All right, shall we proceed to the vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, our next item under public hearing is item 4B, and I'm wondering, do we simply proceed to a motion? Do we have a staff report for this?
The city court will announce it. Proceed with the staff report.
Okay, all right. Will the recorder please introduce the hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony for the purpose of funding an additional purchase with 2006 fire bond general obligation bond funds.
All right, and presenting the staff report is Chief Niblock.
Chief Niblock, thank you, Madam Mayor. This will be a very, very brief presentation, I wanted to have the opportunity to give council a, kind of a close-out report on our fire bond from 2006. So to start off, I want to acknowledge several other city departments that played a significant role in helping us be successful in this. Public Works helped us with the project management, Facilities Division helped us with the remodel in the seismic projects, and Administrative Division helped us with the bond sales and tracking of the dollars, so we really appreciate all that help. On November 7, 2006, the citizens of Salem approved a general obligation bond in the amount of 24.7 million to replace the fire department's apparatus fleet to construct two new fire stations and to replace two existing stations, to seismically improve and provide backup generator power and general improvements to all existing fire stations. At the same time, our partners in Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District, their voters approved a $1.5 million bond to assist us in the purchase of fire equipment. To date, all fire apparatus, department apparatus has been replaced. This includes 14 fire engines, two ladder trucks, an airport rescue vehicle, a breathing air support vehicle, two water tenders, three grass fire vehicles, and the refurbishment of a reserve ladder truck. Of the vehicles just mentioned, Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District funds were used to purchase one of the fire engines, two water tenders, and three of the grass rigs. We currently have a intergovernmental agreement with Salem Suburban, where the city of Salem will retain ownership of those vehicles at the expiration of the agreement. We constructed two new stations, one at 3611 State Street, one at 1970 Orchard Heights, and two replacement stations at 1520 Glent Creek and 5021 Liberty Road. These were all of the same design and were constructed over a 14-month period. We were able to realize significant savings in construction costs by using the same design at all four locations. This photograph was actually featured in Firehouse Magazine the year after the stations were constructed, and we won a silver award for satellite design for our fire stations and the way they blend in the community. All remaining fire stations received a backup generator, that I mentioned before, to provide electrical power during outages, thus allowing the department to continue to provide emergency services during these shortages. In addition, all remaining stations were seismically improved to be better able to withstand an earthquake. They've been seismically protected to the level to remain functional as a structure even after a moderate or severe earthquake. The department applied for and was awarded a $1.3 million FEMA grant to assist in the seismic improvements at stations 1, 2, 4, and 6. All stations received a new tone-out, tap-out alarm system, which is how we let our firefighters know there's an emergency. This new system uses, communicates from the dispatch center using radio frequencies, or it can use our fiber optic network, whichever is faster. This provides us with a backup. The new system is functioning faster, and it's getting our communication to, emergency information to our crews quicker. All stations also received a new diesel fuel exhaust filtration removal system that removes the diesel particulates from the apparatus bays for firefighter safety. And our final ongoing project, most of it was completed today, we dug up the old diesel fuel tank located at Station 1, so that tank is out of the ground, and we will be repaving that lot this spring, and that will conclude all of the projects. So briefly, the money, total bond is 24, 24.7 and change, the additional revenues, which came from the FEMA grant that I mentioned, were a little over a million, we got $24,000 in energy rebates, and we earned $790,000 in interest over the life of this bond. Bottom line is, we are going to have $848,900 remaining with all projects completed. The fire department has an immediate need for 27 cardiac, 12 lead defibrillators. Our current equipment was purchased in 2001 and is well beyond the recommended five-to-eight year service life. The department has twice applied for a FEMA grant to fund this purchase and has twice been denied. These defibrillators are absolutely critical to our mission of saving lives, and as such are carried on every advanced life support vehicle in the fleet. They are used on over 61% of the patients we care for each year. These new cardiac defibrillators have a life expectancy of five to eight years, and using the remaining bond funds for this purchase allows the EMS fund balance to remain stable and within the city council's goals for this fund. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Chief Niblock? Yes, Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Nanki.
Chief, thank you for the nice briefing, thorough. You said we earned interest, 700?
$790,000.
And you're asking for authority to spend almost, or a little hair over that, so we actually earned the money through the interest?
The money is being, we did earn interest, but the money is, we're calling the money bond funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but essentially, we built everything the voters authorized us to build.
We built everything we said we were going to build, that's correct.
So we didn't cut out anything for this?
No.
We took our interest earned, okay, thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just knowing that we have the Streets and Bridges Bond Funds coming up in a similar vein, looking at the original criteria, I have reservations in regards to how the defibrillators fit in with the initial bond rationale and what we went out for, more so in respect on the apparatus replacement. What other things, it says, these are equipment in an emergency response vehicle, can you buy them with those in them?
Typically, the apparatus manufacturers don't sell equipment fully stocked with all the equipment in it, because there's so much variety in what people could purchase for their apparatus. What I would tell you is, we sought bond council's opinion on this, and there were three criteria, we believe we've met those three criteria. You would not see a fire truck in our system without one of these pieces of equipment in the truck, so it's an essential piece of that equipment. If our defibrillators would have been five years older when we did our bond, we would have bought those, we would have planned to buy those in the bond, but they still had some life left in them, so then now we've got the dollars to be able to do it, and they're past their life expectancy, so we believe it meets all three criteria.
Is there anything else in the fire apparatus that we had to buy secondary to the primary order that we then put into the unit?
I think we did buy some mobile data computers for some of the units, but no, I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
Because I'm trying to link these with the fire response apparatus, the actual trucks that we purchased the vehicles.
No, I would say no to that question.
And what other stuff we might have purchased that also goes into them? Because there's nothing in what we sent out to the public to vote on that said "and equipment" to go inside of things.
I think the actual language said "including but not limited to" in the bond language.
Oh, yeah, because we didn't have that in here as far as what the actual language is.
Right.
It'd be nice to understand that.
Is that the end of your question, Councilor Nanki?
More so, yeah, I'd like to actually know what the exact bond language was on what we could, what we were authorized to purchase inside of it.
And I don't believe we brought the bond language here, but we did do a check with bond council who reviewed the language and the criteria and felt that this was consistent. We, as you may recall, we've gone out for two federal grants for this equipment because we think it's so critical to the providing the service that we need, and it is an essential part of what we put on the trucks. We weren't successful in that, and because there are these savings and it qualifies, we felt like this was an appropriate thing to do. Because this is an important safety device to have on our trucks to treat people.
Oh, and I have no misgivings whatsoever about the value and the fact that we need them. It's more so just that it's, that I have confidence beyond the bond council that it's consistent with what the voters put out.
Chief, did you get some additional information?
Just what I had already said. The bond language says "including but not limited to the following," and then it lists out "build and equip two stations, buy apparatus."
Okay.
So that's a pretty general.
That's a very general.
And we went back to, we went back to bond council and asked specifically, on this piece of equipment, here's the life expectancy, and they gave us three criteria that it would need to meet. We believe it meets those three criteria to be bond eligible.
And if I may, then one more follow-up. In regards to the FEMA monies?
Right.
The 1.86 million? Was there any, what were the restrictions on those funds?
That was a specific grant to improve the seismic ability of four of our fire stations. And we did that in stations 1, 2, 4, and 6. And that money had to be used for seismic stabilization. For example, at the airport station, we had to basically rebuild the entire bay because it was a block structure, and it was going to crumble in an earthquake. So it's got a moment frame designed into it, a steel superstructure that the vehicles park underneath. So those dollars, and that grant was a little over a million. The 1.8 was inclusive of the interest that we earned and the rebates, the energy rebates we got back. So the FEMA grant was 1, 1 point, 1 point something.
Okay. And then last question, if I may. There are no more station upgrades that we can do then either?
We have pretty much completed everything we need to do. There's little stuff, but it's routine, it's routine maintenance things. You know, we tried not, we tried not to do painting. That's a routine maintenance type of thing. It really is not bond eligible. Everything has been remodeled.
Are we all set up with dual locker rooms now as well?
We have, yes, we have private bathrooms for people who use their single occupant. So they're unisex, so it's not a male-female situation. There's three private bathrooms, and they're one person at a time. So that's how we address that, and private sleeping quarters for each person, so. I think from that standpoint, we've done everything we can do, and that was all part of the bond dollars, and so we were able to do all that stuff that we needed to do.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Councilor Clem, you had your hand up.
My question.
Oh, it has, all right. Are there any further questions of Chief Niblock? All right, then we will close the public hearing. Nope, there is no one signed up. Right. Is there anyone here in the audience that did come to testify and didn't get their name on the list? All right, then the hearing is closed. All right. Counselor Bennett, would you like to offer a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, yes, moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now proceed to special orders of business, and our city attorney, Dan Atchison, I believe, is going to introduce this, according to my notes.
This is the council's review of initiative petition 001-2013 IP.
All right, Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion or a resolution?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move resolution 2013-68.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve recommendation resolution as noted by Counselor Bennett. 001, 2013. Is there any discussion? Counselor Bennett, would you like to offer some discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. This is a resolution I've distributed to the council along with the copy of initiative petition 001-2013-IP that modifies the parking regulations in the downtown parking district. Its general effect is to make, is to eliminate time-limited parking and to say no charge for use of that unlimited time parking. And then picks up a batch of existing language in the Salem Revised Code. And I'm moving this because I think it's important for us to recognize this was a highly successful petition drive that resulted in 6,000 voters saying they'd like to have this become city law, and an additional 3,000 people who are not city voters or are not registered. But because of where I think generally the petition was circulated, which was downtown, our customers downtown. So we're talking about 9,000 of our fellow citizens and downtown shoppers saying they'd like to have this put into place. And, you know, it's going to be, I think, a new challenge, but one I think we ought to accept with some excitement. It is going to require, I think, the absolute commitment of the council and the city staff to absolutely do everything we can to make this work. I know there are concerns and maybe some hesitation about this, but I would ask you to treat this as a measure that is passed, that it represents for us, I think, in all intents and purposes, the will of our general constituency, and we have an obligation to come forward on this with as much vigor as we would with any other measure that comes in front of us. And I think this has an opportunity to give us a chance to see if this particular approach works. And we have seen in the past decade, this was the way it was, then it wasn't the way it was, and we went to two hours per block face, which I think all of us would agree. While it moved people around, it just made them mad. And this is a return back to where we were before that idea. I'm sure in a city like ours, like Corvallis is going through parking issues right now, Portland goes through them, this will be a never-ending discussion. It will be looked at over time, and I just really urge you to adopt this now rather than put it on the, have it put on the ballot in May and wait till May and lose a lot of time that our voters say they would like to have this in effect. So I'd ask you to support me on this resolution, and I do, as this, as discussion goes forward, I have some questions I'd like to ask staff, but I don't know when to ask them, so I'll stop now.
All right, thank you very much. Are there other comments by counselors? I would like to simply add my voice in support of Counselor Bennett's motion for the resolution. And I would also like to ask the downtown businesses who were supportive and are supportive of the change to really encourage them, if you want this to work, to really take a personal step and work with their employees, encourage their employees to not park on the street in downtown, thereby removing parking space that would be available for customers. Is this going to be a personal responsibility that the businesses can exercise, and I think in doing so will really help us to allow the customer to have the choices that they want to have. They want to park downtown on the city streets for an unlimited amount of time for free. I think we should be certain that those spaces will be available for the customers. So I would encourage businesses to work with their employees on that very sensitive issue. Other comments by counselors? Counselor Bennett, oh, then Counselor Clausen. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Madam Mayor, I want to follow up on your comment. This really is going to be the heart of this program and making this a success, is that downtown businesses, all 500 of them, take very, very seriously the impact that their employees have parking on the street for an unlimited period of time. That just has to come to an end. I think we had a problem with two hours and people moving around. I think one of the perceptions, whether it's a reality or not, we will find out, but a perception is that one of the problems with downtown parking has been employee use of customer parking, which is what those on-street parking spaces are all about. With that in mind, one of the problems with employee parking has been the difficulty enforcing it. And I wanted to ask staff if they could kind of give us a feeling for the process the city of Salem Parking Enforcement staff goes through in order to issue a citation to a downtown employee for parking on the street. And I'd just ask Mr. Rux or whomever's.
Maybe I could start.
Oh, Mr. Wells, I'm sorry.
Counselor Bennett, John Wells, Urban Development Department, I could start, and we can certainly bring Mr. Barnes up if that would help too. Good question. The process for citing an employee on the street is probably, is a higher standard and is more labor-intensive and more difficult to do than other types of citations. I think the staff report referenced 30 different violations that our downtown parking enforcement are dealing with. But the employee issue requires our officers to see and identify the person parking there, and then to verify that actually they are down there working that day. So it requires a lot more labor to not only identify the vehicle and where it's parked, and that then to go to the business or to the establishment and find, in fact, that they are working. Because many times, jobs are, people are down there shopping and they're not, and they're not actually working. So it's very labor-intensive. And every business is different. This includes verifying employees within the mall, in restaurants. In the past, when this has been, prior to the two-hour parking, we had dedicated two officers downtown just for this very purpose. We had 11 security officers in the garages verifying this as well. And there was a lot of staff resources that are put into making sure this happens. And so we are very committed to proceeding with this and making this work, but as the mayor and both the counselors said, we really need the cooperation of the businesses to provide those, that information on what their employee, which are employees, what are their license numbers, and so that we can make that work.
I believe Counselor Clausen had a question.
I did, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not quite sure who the question is opposed to, so I'll, I'll ask the city manager. You know, it's funny, this is just coming, a resolution that comes to us as a routine basis, but this one's just coming differently than normal. What are the final steps to implement this? I mean, is this done when we're done with this?
Well, if city council votes in favor of the motion tonight, it would go into effect immediately, and so we will have, staff will be, need to be diverted from other tasks tomorrow to probably bag the signs to start with, and then we'll decide how to remove them as we go.
Okay, and then, so timing to implement would be theoretically a couple of weeks?
Well, it goes into effect immediately, and we'll start tomorrow in making sure that we deal with the two-hour parking signs that are downtown.
Okay. And this, maybe not so much for the manager or anybody to answer, but I'm just curious what happens to all the discussion of funding our parking garages. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable funding them out of URA. I don't feel, don't feel that there's any other easy ones, so if we pass this, I would just hope that we have a plan over the next six months, and I'm curious how that discussion is going to move forward.
I'd be glad to at least take the first cut on that. If you'll recall, you've been looking at a report from the Parking Task Force that had a whole series of, and I'm trying to remember if you have voted on this one yet, you may not have, but the Downtown Advisory Board has said that they would like to see us stop using urban renewal funds in three years. So we have a fairly substantial window, and one of the things they said in their report to us was, we're going to get these up to really good shape. And so there is a plan in place that at least guarantees that at a point in time, we are going to have parking garages in very good shape and within three years. And I think during that three-year period, we're going to have to look very, very closely at how we're funding those parking garages. And how that relates to this, this does not produce the same kind of revenue that other things might, but it does ask us to take another look at how we would fund those parking garages or what the future of the garages are. But we do have three years to go through that process with a revenue stream coming to those parking garages. So it's not, it's not like the parking garages begin to deteriorate tomorrow. We do have an opening here, okay? Is that? It's an answer, I don't know, just the answer you want.
Let's kick that can down the road.
Well, it was being kicked anyway. It was going down the road anyway for a while.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a sideline comment, but this resolution this evening does nothing to push people into those parking structures, and if their financing takes a different course, it will be after every space on the street is full that people would actually choose that as an option a lot of times. That being said, jurors, current restrictions against them utilizing that parking now all day.
Currently, the jurors are asked to park in Marion Parkade. And Mr. Wells, do you want to talk about what we'd be able to do under this?
That would be a difficult problem to enforce. Right now, the county sends in their notice to jurors to please use Marion Parkade. That will be more difficult for us to enforce once this goes forward, but maybe, Shree?
And the question, is there a restriction that they not use on-street parking?
There isn't a restriction in place at this point.
No, so if they chose just to park on the street, we wouldn't have any way of knowing that they were a Marion County juror.
And prior, they would have to move their car every two hours, which would be inconvenient if you're sitting on a jury, but now there's no time limit, so.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benars, and then Counselor Dickey.
I would be amiss if I didn't say this was bad public policy for our community. I was the chair, six or seven years ago, I was the chair of the committee that instilled the two-hour time-limited downtown parking. I believe we struggled with the issue. We talked about it, we worked it over, and I think that's still the best solution for this community at this time. Maybe parking meters down the way, but not at this time, at least what they have here. I'm secondarily concerned about the process, the initiative process is being hijacked by the chief petitioner and a group of individuals that have a desire to have things that are free, but there's a lot more to this initiative and this issue that we're going to adopt tonight, I think. There's a lot more to it that I don't think people realize when they're signing their name on that dotted line. I just ask people to really read the words that are written when they're signing their name to a petition. It's going to send downtown into a real frizzy, especially after having that great article that Counselor Bennett had mentioned over the weekend from the Statesman Journal. It's going to send downtown in a real frizzy about how to maintain it, how to make sure there's some viability, because you want there's some viability, because you want a place to park, you want a place to go. I'm not happy with it. I understand the way I'm going to vote tonight, but I'm not happy with, with this whole process.
Councilor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my comment is, and I haven't spoken with the petitioners about this, but this is the same comment that I had with the Parking Task Force recommendations, because when I've been out to my neighborhood groups way out of North Salem where we always have to drive when we come downtown, I'm not sure that they've been engaged at all in any of these parking conversations. I don't know if the petitions have been circulated in North, in like, North Salem, or South Salem, or East Salem, where people might not be coming downtown because, hey, they don't like the two-hour parking, they can never find a place to park, or whatever the issue is. So I guess my hope is that this is a change, and maybe that will remove some of the barriers from my constituents being able to come downtown. I'm not sure, I'm not hearing from them that they have actually been contacted with, with any of this, whether it's this petition or the Parking Task Force. I go to my neighborhood groups and I just explain, "Hey, this is coming," and they go, "What? We knew nothing about this." So, you know, this is a change, maybe it'll be a good thing, and I'm not really sure if I'm, I don't know if I'm supporting or not supporting, but just saying, you know, out in North Salem where we are the people who drive downtown and park downtown, I don't, I mean, unless someone was already downtown and had an opportunity to sign a petition or go to an open house or something like that, I'm not sure that the people that haven't been coming downtown because they can't find a place to park have been contacted in this situation.
Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things I hope we'll have throughout, because, I think in part because of what Councilor Dickey just said, is a regular, if not quarterly, every four months, report on the progress of this, how things are going, that we can keep this issue, I think, in front of the public. We do have ongoing issues, like I said, we're, we're not like any, we are like any other community. Parking is an issue. Parking will always be an issue. There'll always be new and different ways to deal with it. I think it would be extremely helpful to have reports like, what are the, what are the occupancy rates? I mean, if we hit beyond 85 or 90%, we have just got to know it. It is important for businesses downtown, it's important for consumers, we have to make sure that this is working. The, the ongoing argument from the petitioners, along with other issues, but central, whenever I've heard discussion of this, has been this employee parking issue. And that's the one we have to, I think, really stay at least initially focused on. And there are, the other reason I think we need to vote on this tonight is, this allows us to take this issue into the budget cycle, because what this petition really asks us to do is do trade-offs for enforcement of parking against other services. This is going to be a budget issue. We're going to have to visit it in the city budget, and it's one of the reasons I feel so strongly we need to get this adopted, because if it is going to have a future, or if this is not how people, how the public wants to see their general fund dollars spent, if they'd rather have police than parking attendants, if they'd rather have library hours, or all the other services we do, we need to make it part of a fairly rich discussion, and that's the budget process. So, again, I, I think it is really incumbent on us to get this into place and get this started, but I do hope we'll have ongoing reports on how it's going. We allow the public for, against, I don't care, coming in and telling us what, what is going on with them as your folks from North Salem, how it's going for them. Is this a working model? Does this model work? We gotta make sure we try to make it work. We really have a responsibility to do that.
All right. Yes, Councilor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question for staff, if that's Mr. Wells or somebody else. The petition talks about point number five, a person who is an unsalaried employer volunteer working at essentially any nonprofit or governmental establishment. How do we, if employee parking is difficult to ascertain, and it also includes people whose professions are downtown, how do we determine whether somebody is a volunteer or not? Volunteers don't run around with badges sometimes, so is enforcement of volunteers, are we dissuading volunteers from downtown? Help me understand the impact of point number five in the petition on volunteer service.
It's, it's very hard to enforce that, and your, your point is, is well taken. I guess I would like to turn to Jeff to see if, for a little explanation. I don't know the answer specifically to that, how we handle that, but it's, it is difficult, and we don't have a lot of data and ability to track that.
My name's Jeff Barnes, I'm the operations supervisor for Parking Services. In short, we try to address it similarly as we would an employee. Observations, following them to their place of wherever they're volunteering, finding out, working with them first to give them options, and then if they don't have options, or if they don't follow the options, then unfortunately go through the enforcement process.
Is that kind of tough, seeing people park and then following them? I mean, that seems like, that's weird. It's weird, isn't it?
It's unique, yes.
Weird.
It's a requirement.
All right. Were there more questions by councilors? Councilor Clem, excuse me, Councilor Clausen.
Sorry. On the 50 on-street parking spaces that could be up to 30-minute parking limits, do we, how are those decided, or, I don't know, do we have 50 30-minute parking spaces now existing? I don't really know. Or is that something that staff is going to have to mull over and come back to us on?
No, we'll tell you how many we have real quick.
Okay.
Currently, we have--
And Mr. Barnes, can you speak into the microphone?
I'll bet.
That's good, that helps.
All right. Currently, we have 30, 30-minute spots, we have 33 of those allocated on the street. In addition to that, we have 27 loading zones, which are also regulated for 30 minutes.
And so, Councilor, we'll need to do some analysis to see if we need more 30-minute parking spaces, or where those would go.
Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, the, under the proposed, if this motion were to pass, you have X amount of employees. If this motion were to pass, would you still essentially need most of the same employees to enforce the points in the petition as you have now with all these different regulated parking spots?
Yes, if not more.
More employees?
It takes more labor to enforce those violations than just one person seeing a vehicle parked on the street.
That will be a budget discussion.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question's in regarding, in regards to the boundaries of the downtown parking district, and how many, there's, there's three parkades that are approved to have some kind of time limiting and permitting on them. How many city, street-level parking areas do we have? And is Riverfront Park also inside of that boundary? And will that take away our ability to permit and, and provide revenue from not only our own employees, but other employees who choose that as an option?
And Mr. Wells?
How many, how many on-street parking facilities does the city have?
Not on-street, at grade level.
At grade level.
Parking--
And what was the second question about Riverfront?
Riverfront Park, is that inside of the downtown parking district?
Yeah. Doug Rux, we'll speak to that.
Doug Rux, Assistant Director for Urban Development. We have two surface lots that exist within the downtown parking district. So we have Riverfront Park, so we have the one at the carousel, and then the one up to the north end of the park. The north end of the park does have permit, so that some of that is used for our part-time employees as a lower-cost location to be able to park. And then we have a surface lot on State Street as well.
And this resolution takes away our ability to permit those lots? Is that an accurate statement?
Paid to have paid meters at those, yes, but for permits, we would need to look at that, and we would have to have some additional discussions.
The way I read it, it's no time limit, no charge. To me, that means no permits, except for in the three garages.
Again, there'd be a question I would want to have a conversation with our legal counsel about, about those surface lots. The Parking Task Force made a recommendation to you in the past about, oh, it's gone through the finance committee process, I should say, about putting meters in those. This particular proposal that's in front of you would not permit that to occur, to be able to put meters at those particular stalls. But we have not discussed about the permits for those low-cost areas for part-time employees.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Dickey.
I just want to follow up on Councilor Nanki's question, and, I mean, it sounds like you need to do a little bit more research on that, but I understood it the same way Councilor Nanki did, there would be no permits, no time limited, so what happens tomorrow to those employees when they come, can they, they, they're employees downtown, so they're technically not supposed to park in those spots. So I, I just would like to have some understanding of that, and I understand there may not be an answer for that tonight, because there needs to be--
Madam Mayor, if I can speak to that?
Yes, certainly. Dan Apjeson?
The petition prohibits parking meters and time limits. It does not necessarily permit, prohibit the city from permitting an off-street parking lot.
Thank you. All right. Other comments or questions by councilors? All right. At this point, are we ready for the vote?
If you would like to call for the question, if there's no more discussion amongst the councilors, yes.
Nothing else we need to do with regard to the record. Okay. All right. The motion was made by Councilor Benars, as I remember, and seconded by--
Bennett.
Thank you, Councilor Bennett. We will now vote on the motion, which is to adopt the, the resolution with the modifications as read by Councilor Bennett. Councilor Benars, right?
No.
No.
No. All right, sorry. Let me go back, yeah. The motion is to adopt the resolution 2000, whatever it was, 13--
001--
-68, yeah.
2013.
There's no modifications or anything there. It is a straightforward resolution that describes sort of the, the basic wherethes of adopting this kind of resolution to enact the-- Right?
For this clarification, the, the resolution you're proposing adopts the petition initiative.
Right.
With no modifications to that.
No modifications. Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's what we're going to vote on.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The nays will please raise your hand, so the city recorder can report that. Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. All right. We have no unfinished business to come before us this evening. I want to draw your attention to information reports, and particularly, information report 7C on the acquisition of the Minto Island property. That was an item that brought some questions to us via email this week, and I encourage the public to access the answers and the information about the Minto Island property purchase by going online to visit the city's agenda, and through the agenda, you can click on to staff reports and find that report. And the other item I draw your attention to is item 7D, has to do with the Oregon State Hospital North Campus update. And again, there is a lot of interest in that property. I think it's a marvelous opportunity, and appreciate so much the way the state of Oregon has brought the City of Salem into the process early and consistently, and we'll be working together with them as the property moves from the state of Oregon ownership into private hands and for the development of that property. I think it provides a tremendous opportunity for a close-in area, and an area that certainly is an important area in our community, and I know there are several people that are watching very closely. I asked, and appreciate that Councilor Laura Tesler is going to be sort of spearheading our committee as we're working on the process and the, and the suggestions, and Councilor Thomas has been keenly aware and, and active in that as well, and I appreciate her willingness to be working on that project as well. So we'll watch for further updates from both councilors and from staff, and again, we so appreciate working with the state of Oregon on that. Okay, we're going to move to ordinances. We have no first readings, but we have second readings, and would the city recorder please introduce those and take the roll call?
Ordinance Bill Number 3313, granting a telecommunications franchise to Data Vision Communications LLC and declaring an emergency. Councilor Dickey?
Aye.
Councilor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilor Benars?
Aye.
Councilor Clem?
Aye.
Councilor Bennett?
Aye.
Councilor Tesler?
Aye.
Councilor Nanki?
Aye.
Councilor Clausen?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill 3513, relating to a street name change for learning lane northeast to Oglaas Court Northeast and declaring an emergency. Councilor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilor Benars?
Aye.
Councilor Clem?
Aye.
Councilor Bennett?
Aye.
Councilor Tesler?
Aye.
Councilor Nanki?
Aye.
Councilor Clausen?
Aye.
Councilor Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment, and there is one person who has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak? I'll call Marvin Sanus, please. Is Mr. Sanus here? Yes?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Sanus, you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three, the red light comes on. Walk me, state your name and address for the record, please.
I live at 640 15th Street Northeast.
And can you, I know it's awkward until everything's set up, but be sure to speak as much as you can into the microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Marvin Sanus, I live at 640 15th Street Northeast in Salem. I own the old West Salem City Hall on Edgewater. I was here three weeks ago to talk about the traffic hazard, and I want to thank the project manager, the traffic engineer, and the public, the director came out and looked at the site, and they said, "Nothing, it's fine, the temporary lines are fine." What I'm here to talk about tonight is the on-street parking. At one time, we had nine on-street parkings adjacent to the property. This morning, we have three. When they're done, we'll have four. I had a very productive talk with Kevin Hotman, the, the, the traffic engineer, and what we're talking about here are these two spots. We're going to get one back, right behind that white car, but I want this other one back, and we are within inches of getting it back. Now, let me see if I can go to the drawing. The, on the permanent drawings, we have a no-man's land in the middle of the street, and what I want the engineers to do is to look at that and see if we can, if we just have a few inches in that no-man's land, I think we can recover two of the spots, instead of just recovering one. This is vital, this on-street parking is vital to this, this is a vibrant, small-business community, this is a national historic registry property, and to lose these, this spot, I just have to do everything I can. I want to get this on, on the radar. I mean, the, the city has been very sensitive to, to, to address this problem for me, and I appreciate that, but I want to look, relook at these drawings. I've talked to the contractors who drew up these plans, and they said, "There might be." But those contractors are the city's employees, and I would be glad to pay them if we can get them to relook at this, these lines. If we move all the lines just a few feet west, it would leave room to restore that spot. If we shrink the no-man's land a little bit, we would have room to restore the spot. The problem is having enough room for the bike path. We've got to have four feet, the parking spot and room for the bike path. And where that line goes across in front of that picnic table, we're within a foot of, of having that enough room for the parking space, so. Anyway, I need help. Anyway, I need help. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Sanus? Well, thank you for waiting so patiently and for testifying this evening. Thank you. All right, there is no new business and no mayor's items? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just forwarded, and I thought I forwarded it to all members of the council earlier this evening, but apparently it didn't go through, so I just forwarded it to the city recorder.
All right.
A public comment from one of the property owners abutting the pathway, the pedestrian pathway, back behind Monkers, that we spoke of previously.
Oh.
So I would just like to include that in the record under public comment, and folks can, can read. There's displeasure, I mean, as they were here, you knew that they would prefer to have it closed. Actually, things have been a lot better there, but the one property owner wanted to make sure that, she asked if I would read it, and it's, it's several pages long, so even under council rules, I wouldn't be able to do that, but I did want to include it in the, the public record for this evening.
Thank you, appreciate you drawing that.
Beyond that, we will have greeting happening this week and pathway potentially next week, so hard surface to allow easier passage for those with strollers and wheelchairs as well as on foot out of the mud.
Wonderful. All right, Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to compliment Public Works Department and our contractors on the massive amount of street improvements going on all over the city. The bridge out here is almost done in front of City Hall and in various other parts of the town, but clearly in, in West Salem, working with businesses to keep, keep them viable. Folks on Eola drive are appreciative that the crews, you know, really did give them adequate warning coming upon construction sites as they move, and then rebuilding the pathway at Barberry Street, which we closed, and redesigning the barricades into a community neighborhood-friendly pathway with vegetation. You know, that's that kind of response that I think Mr. Sanus has seen, and we, it's been noted by many of my constituents in the last couple of weeks, so really big hats off. It looks like they're on time and under budget, and they're making the neighbors happy. It doesn't get any better.
That's right.
If, if I could, Mayor, Counselor Clem, we also very much appreciate the West Salem neighbors to these projects, because we, they've gone through a difficult summer, and we haven't had any complaints. I've heard a lot of compliments. People really understand the project, and they're happy to have it happening, so we very much appreciate the approach they've taken as well.
I too have heard some really positive comments from people who live in that area on, on Eola, and they're very excited, and they're calling it their new sidewalks and their new streets. So they've, they've adopted it and embraced it, and I think a large part, a large part of that is because the interaction with the work crews has been so positive. Just makes a big difference. Great. All right. We have no new business, no mayor's items, no counselor's items, particularly beyond what we've been talking about, so we are adjourned, and we have an executive session. The fun never stops.